Good morning. It's nine AM and I will call to order the June fifteenth meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Mr. Wees?
Here.
Mr. White?
Please join me for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. No one else has joined the Zoom meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. If you, someone wishes to speak, please state your name and address.
Normal Nanoslana, Kansas. I hope our government is looking forward to the future about water use. We're in trouble. This water issue is go all over the US. We're gonna be left out hung to dry. So if you got a plan, if not, maybe ought to look at it. Because this water issue is getting to be a big item. It's coming, folks. Better do something about it now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak at this time? Okay. We will move into the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Nope. Hearing no objection. Uh, the consent agen- consent agenda consists of the approval of prior minutes as presented on six one, six three, and six eight. Approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved. At this time, we will have a public hearing, item one.
Public hearing for community development block grant COVID with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am joined here by Emily Benedict and Bree Beck from the North Central Regional Planning Commission as our grant administrators for the the community development block grant coronavirus in which Sling County received back in July of 2020. During the course of this grant, we were able to assist twelve businesses with funds ranging anywhere from $2,000 to $40,000. The intent of this particular grant was to help those businesses pertaining to those that are, were outside of the city limits of Salina, so strictly for those businesses in Sling County, to help to retain jobs in the low to moderate income range as it related to difficulties with the COVID-19 pandemic. So these particular grant dollars, in total, Sling County received $132,000. A hundred and twenty thousand of that was used for those different grants that were given to twelve different businesses. And then $12,000 that is used for the grant administration piece of it with the assistance from the North Central Regional Planning Commission. All of the awards have been distributed, and this next step is to hold the public hearing on the grant to then afterwards and answer any questions that you guys might have on it. Take public comment, close the public hearing, and then the next step would be to actually request for action to move forward with the grant, close out proceedings. So I would like to invite in our North Central Regional Planning Commission, if you guys have any questions as far as the grant administration piece. They've helped to do the grant administration for this community development block grant for several different communities as soon as the money became available.
Okay, thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you guys have any questions about the grant overall or anything else right now?
One of the quick questions I have is how, how did you feel that the difficult or easy it was to administer the funds coming from the federal government and handling it through us to the end users? Was it a pretty simple transparency type of thing?
Collecting the information from businesses, I mean, I think it was more labor intensive than anyone thought it would be because they had to submit their invoices and then they have to submit proof of payment, and so that's a lot of bookwork.
Lot of time.
Yeah.
Has the money been distributed?
Yes.
And so at this point, it's pretty much just a, here it is. Here's the financials, close it out.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you for your efforts and your support and your time putting all that together and taking care of that for us. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I was on that committee that helped with the dispersment of that, and I, I realized how much work you folks put into this. Tremendous amount of hours and paperwork, volumes and volumes of it, so myself, I appreciate your endeavor.
Thank you.
I might ask that, refresh my memory on how many businesses did we decline to issue anything to? One, Hannah says one. So, well, again, I'm, I saw the guidelines that you had to work by, how, what you, what the businesses had to reply to you with. And I know that some of them didn't like that, but that's the federal government rules, not yours, so thank you for doing it. Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public or wish to speak?
So I think if you just acknowledge on the record that you are opening the public hearing, take public comment and then close the public hearing just to make it formal.
Okay, we're opening the public hearing for community development block grant COVID closeout is open. Is there any public that would, would like to speak? Seeing none, we will just close out the public hearing of the community development block grant. We will move into action items. Item one.
RFA one eight two dash two one, community development block grant COVID closeout with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Have we been here before?
Yes, about the same thing. So now that the public hearing has been held in regards to this, it is requested that the commission proceed with the grant closeout process. And this also not only asks for the final documents to be signed to close out the grant, but also request final payment for us to be able to make for, to cover the remaining costs for grant administration by the North Central Regional Planning Commission. Your alternatives for action today are to authorize for the Sling County CDBG CV grant twenty dash CD dash one one three to be closed out or not authorized and provide staff with further instruction. The staff, staff obviously recommends for the grant closeout to, to move forward, and we would submit final payment of $2,000 for the grant administration. That, that final $2,000 is part of the grant dollars that were awarded, so there's no budget impact to the actual county other than the staff time that's been used to help with the coordination of the North Central Regional Planning Commission.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Any comments by the public? I will bring it back to commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the Sling County CDBG CV grant to be closed down.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty-two dash twenty-one, community development block grant COVID closeout. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Hannah. We'll move into action item number two.
RFA one seven eight dash two one, local emergency operations plan, statement of acknowledgement with Michelle Barkley, Director of Emergency Management.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here to ask for a signature on a statement of acknowledgement that is required for us to submit our local emergency operations plan for its final review. However, before I do that, I'd like to provide you guys a brief overview of the plan, just to outline the commission's roles and responsibilities that are listed in the plan. So Brad, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, please.
Could we please close out the row of lights over there on that?
Michelle, I do not have that yet. Can you give me a few minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. And you had this already, right?
Yes.
I could hold up my hard copy. Put a pointer on my head or something.
Well, I tried to keep it short, so I apologize.
It is a lot of information there, though, a lot of good information. Thank you. And I'll just, it is amazing of all the players that are involved in emergency management in this plan. I mean, it's, I was really surprised and really kind of shocked of all the players that are involved in this, so it's, a lot of efforts go into that.
Oh. Thank you. Um, so if you want to switch to the next slide, I will just go over a brief overview of the plan. Some of the background information of the plan, most importantly, the purpose of the emergency operations plan is to provide structure and purpose for an organization and jurisdiction, and their responsibilities for the initial response. Our plan is an all hazards plan, which means that it has a range and a variety of disasters that it can be used and applicable for, including the scale, duration, and cause of an incident. Next slide. So these are the two Kansas statutes that are dedicated to emergency operations plans, basically just stating that every local entity is required to have an emergency operations plan. Next slide. So back in 2019, the state and federal government got together and pushed out a new list of modifications and requirements, causing some changes in the traditional emergency operations plan that you guys are used to. The goal of some of those changes were to reduce busy work, to regionalize the expiration of the plans, to also provide regional planning workshops to provide more help to the locals, as well as updating some templates and planning standards. One of the biggest takeaways from these modifications, and my personal favorite, is the web-based mapping tool. There is a sample of one of those on the side. Basically, we are able to compile all of the information that we used to have listed on paper and have it more applicable. So in this map in particular, we pulled the two-tier result facilities that we have in Sling County, and we also pulled the schools that we have in Sling County, so you can see what facilities are housing chemicals and how close they are to schools. Next slide. So a part of the LEOP regionalization is to align the expirations of the plans to ensure that each region is expiring at the same time. As it stands right now, it is sporadic across the state. For instance, ours was supposed to expire back in 2020, but due to the pandemic, it's been pushed to 2021. They're planning on doing this by, over a two to five-year process of just reapproving plans for the next two to seven years. The benefit is basically just for the state to provide locals better support in their emergency operations plan, which is also going to help us align with some other grant programs such as Homeland Security for some of our planning initiatives. Next slide. So this is just a map of the regional layout. As you can see at the bottom, in year one, which is where we are now, the North Central is set to have their plans be reviewed on August first. And then over the next five years, we will work to get the rest of the state on the same page as the region. Next slide. So this is just a quick summary and overview of some of the Kansas planning standards that have changed. To reduce the attachments, they created the EOP mapper, which takes out the ESF indexes and just makes them more useful. It also takes the equipment and personnel lists and created a separate supporting document in the plan that can actually be pulled out, so you're not having to rifle through the entire plan to find that information. It consolidated standards. Counties can now elect to not address any planning standards that aren't applicable to their county. In Sling County, we aren't, we don't have any standards that don't, aren't applicable for us. But the reason that I am here today is it did create some concurrent documents, such as the stakeholder acknowledgement, and then it just modified the layout of Kansas planner, changing some terminology and things like that. Next slide. So this is the Kansas mapper. I will not be logging into it today just because there's some sensitive information, and we are in a public setting, but I did want to demonstrate that it being a URL makes it accessible and it can be pulled up times of disaster response, disaster response. Next slide. So there are fifteen emergency support functions. Under each emergency support functions, there are three different types of agencies involved. You've got your coordinating agency, which is assigned to the emergency support function and is responsible for the preparedness, response, and recovery phases of the incident management. You have the primary agencies that are chosen based on their authority, resources, and their capabilities. And then the support agencies that assist the primary agencies because they have specific resources or capabilities. Next slide. So I would like to note that the next couple of slides I will be going over relatively quickly. I'm just trying to outline how many different agencies are involved and listed in the plan and the different resources and roles that they post. Yes.
Just a quick question while we're, you're just getting into this. One of the questions I had is earlier, you stated that you have some training available. I mean, do all these agencies, do you have training for each individual one of these?
Training for and with, yes.
Okay, wow. Thank you, sorry.
So the first ESF is transportation. Their coordinating agency is Road and Bridge. You have a list of the primary agencies and then the support agencies for them. I would like to note that these agencies for primary and support can be either state or local level, as well as private or nonprofit sector-related. Next slide. ESF two is communication, and this is, the coordinating agency is dispatch. Next slide. ESF three is public works and engineering with the coordinating agency again being Road and Bridge. Next slide. ESF four is firefighting with the coordinator agency being Salina Fire as they are the only paid fire response in the county. Next slide. And this is where you guys are listed under ESF five for emergency management. The coordinating agency is emergency management, but the primary agency is the Board of County Commissioners with a long, extensive list of support agencies. Next slide. ESF six is mass care, housing, and human services with the coordinating agency being Red Cross. Next slide. ESF seven, which is resource for sport, support, the coordinating agency is Sling County Administrative Resource Center. Next slide. ESF eight is public health and medical services with the coordinating agency being Salina Fire, the hospital, and the health department. Next slide. ESF nine, search and rescue with the coordinating agency being Salina Fire. Next slide. ESF ten, oil and hazardous materials with the coordinating agency again being Salina Fire. Next slide. ESF eleven is agriculture and natural resources with the coordinating agency being Central Kansas Extension District. Next slide. ESF twelve, emergency and utilities with the coordinating agency being emergency management. Next slide. ESF thirteen, public safety and security with the coordinating agency being the Sheriff's Office. Next slide. ESF fourteen, long-term community recovery is the coordinating agency is emergency management. Next slide, and the last one, I promise. Is external communication with the coordinating agency being emergency management. Next slide. So I have cut out the, from the annex for emergency support functions, the responsibility that is listed for the commission. Your preparedness role in the plan is to help develop and maintain community continuity of government plans, which you guys do. Every department for Sling County does have a continuity of operations plan that they do maintain. Next slide. Any questions?
Michelle, I have a couple.
Mm-hmm.
You, you had to review this annually and have a, a new plan put into place?
So it's not up for official review every year. They're trying to make that more synchronized, so it's every four years. But we do look at our plan every year and update it biannually.
And one other, looking at the map of the North Central, does that follow, does that mirror the, the hazardous material regional team and also the?
The Homeland Security Grant one as well, too.
Okay, thank you.
So, are there any other questions?
No, very, a lot of good information there.
So I'm here to request that you guys sign the statement of acknowledgement so that I may submit the plan before the August twenty-first deadline, that it may be reviewed, and I will plan on coming back after the plan has been reviewed and approved by the state to have a study session with you to cover more in-depth the content of the local emergency operations plan, and then request for recognition and adoption of the approved plan.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action. Mr. Chairman, I move, we signed the statement of acknowledgement to allow the county to submit our local emergency operations plan for official review as outlined in RFA one seven eight dash two one.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one seventy-eight dash twenty-one, local emergency operations plan statement of acknowledgement. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item three.
RFA one eight three dash two one, purchase replacement of three twenty-twenty-two Sheriff's Office marked SUV with Captain Jim Hughes with Sling County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Captain Hughes.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm here this morning to talk to you about replacing three marked SUVs used in the operations division of the Sheriff's Office. And these SUVs we're requesting are going to replace three twenty-seventeen SUVs that are And these SUVs we're requesting are going to replace three 2017 SUVs that are currently in service. And those vehicles that we're asking to replace range a mileage from 155,000 to $180,000. Or 180,000, sorry. Don't put dollars on it. Those are miles, not dollars. But we did put out bids and the bids were designed to encourage competitive bidding for multiple manufacturers, equipment vendors and installation. And we met, we got three bids that met specifications and I have those listed in the RFA. They are from Traffic Control Services out of Wichita, Kansas. Their bid was 179,313.63, including three trade-ins. Shawnee Mission Ford, Shawnee, Kansas was 173,565, including three trade-ins. And Marshall Motor, Marshall Motor out of Salina submitted a bid of 154,434, including trade-ins. Marshall Motor submitted the lowest bid and the sheriff's office staff is recommending to award the bid to Marshall Motors. As far as budget impact, 2021, the commission budgeted 315,274 to the E I P fund. Within that money, 261,994 were allocated to vehicle purchases. To date, 13,300 has been spent out of the pool of the E I P money. And that would leave a balance of 301,974 if you would approve this RFA.
Okay, and just the way you said that is, you said, remaining balance of 301,000. With, with this purchase coming out of it, it is leaving a balance of 147,000.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Thank you for the correction. We would have taken the money out of the 301,974 and it would leave a balance of 147,540.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
Are these the vehicles for patrol only, basically?
Yes, they'll be marked for patrol.
The mileage alone tells me that it's a necessary request. And we want to keep good, good vehicles on the road for safeties and reliability. So I will certainly be in favor of it.
Have you been assured of a delivery date?
Yes and no. Yesterday, the 14th was the first day that Marshall Motor was allowed to even order these vehicles. So the 14th was the first day that they would be allowed. The bid did say that they expected delivery sometime by December of this year. So that's delivery to, to Marshall Motor or to the, to the dealer. And then we would have installation on top of that.
So they might not be on the road until 2022?
That's very possible, sir. And from my conversations with multiple dealerships, that's kind of the standard operating procedure at this current time.
Is it feasible to think that with everything that's going on in that arena right now with reliability to be able to purchase vehicles and so forth? To perhaps change some of our requirements for the vehicles for the short term? Just to be able to get vehicles? Is that, is that a possibility?
Well, I, I think right now that the way we are looking forward in our fleet of vehicles and the equipment we have, I, I think we are bidding the equipment for the vehicles we need, when we need them and, and the equipment that's in them. I think what's hurting us right now is probably just going to be the availability of vehicles and, and I don't have a better answer for that, but I'd be open to having a discussion with anybody that does.
I, I mean, I'm guessing, what I'm saying is if we were to take off certain amounts of equipment, and I would check that out with the dealers, that what, what would enhance our ability to be able to get the vehicles quicker? And again, I'm talking short term because we wouldn't want to take equipment off of our vehicles long-term, but if it meant the difference between, because you've got vehicles here with 180,000 miles on them. If you're talking another 10 months or whatever to get the vehicle, it's going to have well over 200,000. I'm just talking about being able to get vehicles.
That's a, that's a discussion I'd be interested in.
It's something that you might talk over with your, with your local dealers and just to see what they say. I mean, take a look at your requirements and say, we can get by in the short term without some of this type of equipment if that's what's holding up the purchase. That's, that's what I'm seeing.
Commissioner, maybe it's, my understanding is it's, it's a chip shortage, which doesn't have anything to do with the equipment and they've shutting down factories because they can't build. So that's just what I've heard.
I've, I've heard similar comments also, but I'm, I'm just asking them to check it out. If that, if that indeed is the case, then we'll be quiet.
One quick question, Captain Hughes, is that in the past, what has been the typical timeframe from when we order one and the time it gets into service has been in the past? Cause I, I remember right, even in the past four years ago when we did this, it was quite a while later when we even got them into service. What is the typical timeframe?
A lot of this really depend on the schedule of the installers we have. So there's times that we can get a vehicle maybe within four to five months after purchase. And then it takes, you know, depending on the installer's schedule. It takes up to a month to get a vehicle broken down and outfitted again.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Would it? Would it help you instead of looking at, at this year's model? Of looking at new last year's model that they might have on the lot that could be, that could be put into, I mean, it's not so much that you're looking at a 2021, you just need a fresh vehicle with no miles to get started.
And that's an interesting point, sir. The, at least Shawnee, Mission Ford, they did bid existing vehicles that they had. And I think Traffic Control Services did too. Yeah, they bid 2021. So they had vehicles that were on the lot and they were substantially higher in price. So, you know, if that particular bid was $30,000 more with, with vehicles on the lot. So we'd probably have to pay for that luxury.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know vehicle prices right now are, are through the roof, especially if they are on the lot and they're ready to be sold. But second point then, your budgeted money the year before for the coming year, why are we in June bidding out vehicles? Why weren't we doing this in January of this year? To maybe get ahead of this? I mean, you were, you knew in January that you had the monies to appropriate it to purchase vehicles.
Correct.
Can you explain why we wait until June to, to go out for bids?
I sure can, but the, the commission was considering some alternative vehicle purchasing procedures early in the year and that delayed the sheriff a little bit in their consideration, but they have been working. I mean, they didn't just start this last week. They've been working on this for a couple of months now.
Thank you, Administrator. Any other comments by the commissioners?
I guess I'll just say one thing, Jim, that it's intriguing to me that look at the Marshall Motors bid versus the Shawnee Mission bid, which the vehicles are there, but you know, it wouldn't take too many a transmission or two or something like that to, to eat up the money that's the difference in those bids. So just a thought.
Any other comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak? We'll bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the low bid from Marshall Motor Company for 154,434 for RFA 183-21.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 183-21 Purchase Replacement of Three 2022 Sheriff's Office Marked SUVs. Any further comments? If not, we'll bring you back to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Captain Hughes. Item four.
RFA 184-21 Purchase of Two 2022 Sheriff's Office Marked SUVs with Captain Jim Hughes, Celine County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Yee.
Hello, hello. This particular RFA is to purchase two additional marked SUVs. As you recall, the commission granted four additional positions to the operations division of the sheriff's office. And we have those deputies starting to hit the streets now. We're getting them out of the academy and out of field training. And they're getting ready to go out and protect the service of Slane County, but we need something for them to drive. So the way we have our vehicles distributed between officers, two officers share a vehicle. When Officer A is on days off, B drives and vice versa. So with four new, four new personnel, we need two additional vehicles to, to give them something to drive. Again, we put the bids out to encourage competitive pricing. And the same three outfits were, had given the bids on, on, on this particular RFA, Traffic Control Services out of Wichita for 120,542.42. Shawnee Mission Ford of Shawnee was 120,310. And Marshall Motor submitting the lowest bid at 113,956. There are no trade-ins on, on these vehicles as there are going to be additional purchases. The math is just a little bit different than what we went over before, but since you guys approved the previous RFA, we have a 147,540 in the E I P funds that were approved for vehicles and equipment purchases. If you guys chose to purchase these two vehicles, that would leave a balance of 33,584 in the money that was allocated to the sheriff's office for E I P.
Okay, and since, a quick question here. With the other three being trade-ins, they will, those Marshall Motors would take the equipment stuff out of those three and put them in these new vehicles?
Yes, we went, the bidding process, we, we went through and looked at it very carefully. And there was some equipment that could be repurposed. And the equipment that we identified that could be repurposed, we did include in the three. However, going from a Ford to a Dodge in four years difference, the footprint of law that equipment has changed. So we did have to purchase some new equipment simply to.
And this new purchase here with these two new additions does include all new equipment going into these? At that price?
Yes, sir.
Cool. Thank you. Sorry.
My question, Jim, is, I should have asked this on the previous RFA, but your, your trade-in allowance, it doesn't say the exact amount, but those vehicles with the trade-in are $51,000 apiece. The new ones over here without trade-ins are $56,000 apiece roughly. So it's, is that about what they allowed you for trade-ins? About $5,000 per vehicle on the previous ones?
I think it was 16.5, Commissioner, for the three. I have the exact numbers.
That would be, yeah, that, that's close enough.
Yeah, 16.5 for the three.
I have one question. You were allotted 261,994 for vehicles.
Yes, sir.
With the purchase of these five, you will be going over that, but you do have other funds in your E I P. Are you not going to be able to get some of the other equipment that you budgeted for?
No, sir. Some of that equipment has been purchased that we identified. Some has been purchased already. And there's a couple of pieces of equipment that we are not going to purchase out of that, not because of this particular incident, but we'd be getting some new, some of the equipment we identified with the new facility in the, with the new sheriff's office and jail facility in the future. And so there was, so the equipment that that was in the equipment fund, the $53,000, that had been purchased already and, and the money sitting in their idle and no further equipment is going to be purchased out of that money. And, and again, I want to stress, it's not because of this. It was.
Okay, any other questions? Any member of the public who wish to speak? We'll bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the low bid from Marshall Motors for 113,956.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 184-21 Purchase of Two 2022 Sheriff's Office Marked SUVs. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item five.
RFA 179-21 Form 720 Signature and Payment of 2020 Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Fee with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Ms. Lemur.
Good morning, commissioners. This request is to get a signature from the chairman on the Form 720 form. And it's actually for the 2021. That was an error I made on the PCORI fee. The Affordable Care Act imposes this fee on self-insured plans. It was originally scheduled to sunset for us last year, but it was extended to 2029. Our insurance consultant, C-Biz, does complete the form for us. So the alternatives for action are to authorize the chairman to sign the form for the PCORI fee. Do not authorize that. If that happens, then we would pay, be subject to IRS penalties. The staff recommendation is to authorize the chairman to sign the PCORI form and pay the fee. The budget impact on that is 1,013.87, but that does come out of our insurance trust fund reserves. It doesn't come directly out of the, the budget.
Any other further comments or questions?
That's pronounced PCORI?
It's actually the Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institute.
I'll mark that down in my acronym list. Thank you.
Marilyn, the million, $13,000, that's, that's the amount that the, that the county pays.
It's 1,000.
Oh, 1,000, $13.87. I couldn't.
Yeah, that comes out of our, that's built into our premiums that we set aside for insurance costs.
That period in there is really small for my eyes. Sorry.
Any members of the public who wish to speak? We'll bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action. I'll second the motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 179-21 Form 720 Signature and Payment of 2020 Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Fee. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Item six.
RFA 180-21 Slane County Emergency Paid Sick Leave with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning again. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the acronym for that is F F C R A, did mandate emergency paid sick leave to certain private employers and public employers. That mandate did end at the end of 2020. The COVID relief bill signed into law late in 2020, provided that employers can voluntarily extend the F F C R A through March 31st, 21. Celine County opted not to extend that, but to create our own Slane County Emergency Paid Sick Leave with an expiration date of June 30th of 21. And that was as a bridge to normalcy and to encourage employees to stay home if they're sick and so not to risk exposure to others. The American Rescue Plan Act, signed into law on March 11, 2021, provided additional financial relief for those employers that voluntarily extended the F F C R A through September 30th of 21. Although we did not extend the F F C R A and created our own emergency paid sick leave plan, the expenses are eligible for relief under the A R P A. Positive cases have reduced. Uh, positive cases have reduced greatly, uh, but we are not completely eliminated on those. So we are having some absences and we do encourage employees to stay home. So this request is to discuss an extension of the Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Plan to September thirtieth of twenty-one, just to align with the FF-CRA. Um, the alternatives for action is to improve that extension from June thirtieth to September thirtieth. Do not approve the plan or direct staff to come back with a different option. Um, would like to extend that just to align it with the FF-CRA, um, but it is the commissioner's choice whether they would like to do that. Uh, no additional funds above what has already been budgeted for twenty twenty-one salaries is the budget impact. Available for questions?
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will b- bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the extension of the Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave from, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty dash twenty-one, Sling County Emergency Paid Sick Leave. Any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Item seven.
RFA one eight one dash two-one, Employee Policies with Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning again. This request is to buy, uh, to revise the following policies as presented. The, they have been reviewed by department heads and elected officials pursuant to policy. Um, with the recommended revision as follows, um, policy twenty thirteen A, Basic Work Week. Uh, the working hours were indicated for some of the departments, but not all of them. So this simply revises that policy to where the department head or elected official has the discretion to assign hours of work for their employees and to be able to still serve the public within the hours of operation for each office that is fixed by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the next policy is thirty point oh one A Pay Plan. The revisions reflect, uh, changing the wage increase from promotions from at least two point five percent to five, to five percent at a minimum. Adding a paragraph, uh, for formal grade reclassifications. We did have a practice in place, but it just wasn't reflected in policy. Allowing the county administrator to, uh, authorized, um, hiring candidates up to step seven. Currently that is at step four. We're finding that, uh, with the tight, um, market on, uh, getting applicants that we are having to, um, increase the wages, starting wages for certain positions. And then also, uh, when internal activity is, um, affected by the external market and the hiring of new employees, sometimes it does affect some other employees in that same job classification. Uh, this would allow us to review that with county administrative administrator approval, um, to, um, have a possible, um, salary increase for that. Um, and it also, um, updates the process to request a classification review. Thirty oh nine A, the sick leave, uh, we had some duplicate language in there about, uh, allowing dental care verbiage, uh, to use sickly for that, but it also, uh, we are recommending to allow sick leave for any person residing with the employee's household. And that will generally, uh, cover caregivers within the household that, uh, may not be a direct family member. It could mean partners, uh, that are not married, uh, foster children, um, and so it would, it would hit all those with that verbiage. Um, thirty point one two funeral leave, um, allows funeral leave for any person within the employee's household, again, aligning with what we wanted to do with the sick leave. Um, it also allows for funeral leave for an extended family member if approved by the department head or elected official. Um, and then it finally, it, it revises the prorated hours for regular part-time employees due to the increase in some variable hour positions. Previously, we used to be either twenty hours or forty hours. Um, we do have some positions that are twenty-four hours, some that are thirty-two hours, so it just prorates that amount. And then forty point five four telework. There is verbiage added regarding the two-factor authentication for those that telework, uh, to reduce cyber risks. The alternatives for action is to approve the policies as presented. Do not approve the policies or direct staff to uh, make further revisions and present it at a later date. Uh, staff recommendation is to approve the policies as presented and no additional budget impact.
Quick question, I, and I should have, I should know this, but I can't think of it. It's, what is the difference between a temporary employee and a regular part-time employee?
A regular part-time employee is a capers-covered position. They earn, um, prorated, um, leave time. Um, uh, temporary is just that, it's for a shorter period of time. Um, could be less than a year, could be just a few weeks.
Okay. It caught me because it's like, I couldn't, a regular part-time employee gets sick leave and all that other stuff and I'm thinking.
Yeah, at a prorated, at the half.
Right, but I'm, I'm still thinking it's like a part-timer even gets it.
We call him regular. I think some people like to call him permanent, but none of us are permanent. So we call him regular, part-time.
All right. Any other questions or comments by the commissioner? Any other comments? Anyone from the public like to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the policies as presented.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number one eighty-one dash twenty-one, Employee Policy Revision twenty dot thirteen A, Basic Work Week, General Policy thirty dot oh one A Pay Plan, Policy thirty dash thirty dot oh nine A Sick Leave, Policy thirty dot twelve Funeral Leave and Policy forty dot fifty-four Telework. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
At this time, we'll move into informational item.
Uh, item one, Bond Financing Plan.
Good morning, commissioners. County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So in November of twenty twenty, an item was before the voters of Sling County to, uh, approve a sales tax and issuance of bonds to construct a new, uh, jail and sheriff's facility. That item did pass. Uh, and so that is what brings us here today. In August of last year, in preparation for that vote, your commission received a financial projection from our municipal advisor, David Artterberry with Stiefel Nicholas, and Mr. Artterberry is back today with a revision as we look toward, um, moving into the actual bond issuance this summer. Uh, he also has for you a schedule, uh, which calls for us to be back in front of you in the middle of next month to actually adopt the, uh, resolution authorizing the sale and then, um, actually, uh, conducting the sale and getting the proceeds in August. So, uh, Dave, if you'd like to come on up and, um, present the financial information and answer any questions.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here again and, and especially in an unmasked state, so. Yeah. Um, as Phil was mentioning, um, when we were here last August, we presented to you some projections for, um, how we anticipated that the revenue coming in from the sales tax would be used to pay off the, the bonds that were issued for the project. And, um, we've got a couple of updated scenarios for you that, that show these cash flows. The first scenario is, um, a, a very, what I would consider to be a very conservative scenario. It actually assumes that the, the sales tax that you are receiving right now, uh, remains, remains stable over the life of the bond issue. In other words, it, it doesn't grow. Um, the second scenario, uh, is what I can, I, I call a more aggressive scenario, and it, it assumes that, uh, going forward, your sales tax does grow. And it grows at a annual rate approximately equal to the same rate it's grown at over the last decade or about a little over two percent. Um, so the first scenario I wanted to go over with you though, do, do they have that in front of them?
Okay.
Yes.
And, and I think the other key thing to mention, that's a little bit different than, um, where we were in, last August, is the vote that was taken, uh, in, in November, authorizes the issuance of bonds up to an amount. And the scenarios that you have in front of you today actually contemplates two separate issuances up to that amount. Um, and just in terms of the way the cash flows work, and so Dave will, uh, explain that part as well.
Sure, sure. Um, the, the first scenario is the one that up at the top, at the top, it says no growth scenario. And I, I just kind of want to walk you through these again, and this should, some of this should look familiar, was almost a year ago, but, um, a lot of the layout is pretty much the same. On the left-hand side of this, uh, this report, you'll see in green, the estimated sales tax collections. Um, and you'll see there, um, you know, the numbers begin in two thousand and twenty-one when the sales tax come in. But the first full year of collections that you'll have will be next year in twenty twenty-two. And based off of an average of your collections in recent years, we expect that that would generate about six point two million dollars per year. Um, over to the right of that green column, you'll see the, the growth rate on the sales tax. We've assumed here again, no growth rate in this scenario. Um, you will see then a, a reddish or a pink, um, column. This represents the annual debt service that we anticipate to be on this first series of bonds. And, um, the principal amount of this first issue, right now, it's been said at seventy-five million dollars, which, which is less than the total amount that was authorized by voters. Um, and as Phil mentioned, um, the, the reason it's, it's less is because what we've done is anticipated two different bond issues. We anticipate, um, a, the first issue, a, a large issue to fund the majority of the project, um, at about seventy-five million dollars. And then we anticipate a, a follow-up or a second issue in approximately two years, uh, to issue the remaining bonds for the project. And the reason we did that is simply because at this point in time, we don't know how much the project is going to come in at. We, I mean, we have a project estimate that we hope is a good figure, but things could change and it could come in maybe less than that or more than that. But the amount of that second issue that you would have would then be determined by what we would hope to be a good final project cost estimate. So hopefully, within about two years, the project will be sufficiently underway and you'll have a, a better handle on the overall project cost. So that we can do a final, what I'll refer to as a cleanup bond issue and, and size that to the exact amount of, of funds that you need. Um, so that blue box then represents the estimated debt service on that second or cleanup series of bonds that would occur in two thousand twenty-three. And then that yellow column represents the, the, the combination of debt service on the first issue and the second issue. Um, and you'll see there, the debt service is, um, oh, a little under five point one million dollars. And that compares to the sales tax collections that we've estimated of about six point two million. Um, that, the ratio there of the sales tax collections over debt service, we call that the, the coverage ratio. And you'll see just to the right of the yellow column, you'll see that coverage ratio at about one point two-two times. Um, so that basically means that you should be collecting each year revenue equal to about a hundred and twenty-two percent of your debt service payments. That surplus that you collect each year, um, is in the next column. It's about one point one million dollars. Um, that surplus each year would, would build up. It, it can't be used for any other purpose. It has to be used, um, set aside and used to pay off the bonds early. So the, the, the key thing to look at here then is, when will that cumulative surplus equal to the amount of debt that you have outstanding? Um, so, and that debt outstanding is reflected in that column called bond balance. And you'll see there that in the dark blue, it's a little bit hard to read on my printout, but you'll see in about year eighteen, the cumulative surplus will exceed the bond balance. At that time, you can retire all the remaining bonds and you would cancel the sales tax. So I, I think this is pretty similar to the numbers that we looked at last summer, uh, with about an, uh, even though the initial bond issue is sold for twenty-two years, we expect, given this pretty conservative set of assumptions, that you pay the bonds off in about eighteen. Um, the next scenario, the one that I termed, uh, aggressive growth. Basically what we've done here is, like I mentioned before, assumed that the sales tax would grow at about two percent, two point two percent per year. Um, y- your sales tax growth over the last decade is, has been pretty healthy. I, I, I don't know if you can sustain that, you know, going forward for the next fifteen or twenty years, but I wanted to give you a scenario that is, is optimistic. And you know, I would hope that maybe with, um, a lot of the growth going on in the community, that maybe this is, um, something that's, um, that, that is achievable. Um, but what you'll see there, the big difference here is, um, you know, the green column, instead of being six point two million dollars per year, starts growing and it, 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 it will grow pretty quickly, uh, even with a, you know, a two point two percent rate of growth, when you take into account compounding, that, that'll, you know, cause that sales tax to grow up, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in the, in the not-too-distant future. The coverage ratios, then, if you look over at the column just to the right of the yellow column, you'll see those coverage ratios, instead of being one point two-two times, are quite a bit bigger than that. And they, and they grow as the sales tax grows. This would end up resulting, if you look over at that far right-hand column, in the sales tax being retired instead of in eighteen years, more like about fourteen years. So couple of different scenarios. I don't know where the reality will end up, but I would expect maybe somewhere in between these scenarios, you know, pay off the sales tax in somewhere fourteen to eighteen years. So. Um, any questions about the numbers? I know there's a lot of numbers in front of you here and I've kind of run through them quickly, but want to make sure you're comfortable with them and see if you have any questions.
David, the thing that I'm excited about is this early payoff. I mean, because if we, if, you know, we've told the voters it's going to be twenty-two years to pay this off, is, it was our original assumption. And, and if we get this done in fourteen years, or even back over here with the no-growth scenario in eighteen years, and we actually do say we're going to stop that sales tax, I think that would be an unprecedented move in, in government, you know, particularly in our local area. They, they've tended to keep those sales tax right there, even though it, it might be paid off and use it for something else. So I'm excited, uh, if that really comes to fruition and happens. So I, I appreciate the numbers and, and the estimates.
Sure.
A question o- on these sheets and, uh, w- when it talks about rate.
Mm-hmm.
Is that interest rate?
Right. Th- that's the, uh, interest rate. Uh, in this case, that would be the interest rate on, um, on those bonds. And, and each annual maturity of the bonds has their own interest rate assigned to it. No, but those are are fixed rates that are determined when the bonds are sold, so those wouldn't change.
And even the twenty twenty-three bond rates, are, are they set?
Um, the, the, they're, they're fixed rates, but they won't be set until the actual bonds are sold. So the, the, the rates that I've included here are just estimates based on where I, what I think the interest rates might be. I think these are probably, um, somewhat conservative assumptions. Um, you know, right now, I think. You know, right now, I think if you were to sell bonds, you know, today in today's market, the interest rate would probably be somewhere in the range of two percent or so. So I think I've been somewhat conservative here in what my estimate of the interest rates will be.
Okay, yeah, because you're showing a four percent in year one.
Yeah, that that's a good observation. And we've had some discussions with county staff about this. Typically, when bond issues get sold, particularly bonds, bond issues of this size, the way they will be sold to the public is that it will be on a, the bonds will be sold through a sealed bid process. And the county will receive bids from financial institutions, banks and brokerage firms. And the county will award the issue to whoever is providing the lowest overall interest rate on the bonds. And that award is, the lowest overall interest rate is based on the the coupon rate that's on the bonds. So the the rate that you see here, it's based on that as well as how many dollars they are bidding to pay for the bonds. So for instance, the way a lot of bids get structured these days is the interest rates on the bonds might be three or four percent, which is above the going rate on bonds, but the investors, the the bidders will bid with a premium. So you might end up having a situation where you sell seventy-five million dollars worth of bonds, but you actually get, receive eighty million dollars. They they will bid with a premium. And that premium is factored into their bid to determine the overall borrowing cost. It's kind of like if you're getting a mortgage, there's a difference between the the interest rate on it and in the APR on it. It's sort of the same thing. And so in this case, I've assumed that the, when you take bids on the bonds, you will get a a premium on this first sale of bonds. And that premium would be available to pay project costs. And that that premium is also why some of these interest rates are are higher because because of that. So it's 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 a, it's a little bit kind of getting into the weeds of how bonds are bid. But it's something that we will be discussing further with staff and with you as we approach the bid bidding day.
And one other follow-up question. On on the sales tax, sales tax surplus fund, you you mentioned that there'll be a pool of money that is above what the payment is. Why isn't that applied immediately against the balance to whittle that down? Why why do you pool that money and then make one big payment later?
That's a good question. When you sell a bond issue, investors will demand a certain call feature on the bonds. In other words, investor, there's typically a earliest possible optional redemption date on the bonds. And usually that redemption date is probably about seven to ten years after the bonds are issued. Investors in municipal bonds don't allow, they're they're not willing to buy bonds where they, those bonds can be immediately paid off by the issuer. They demand some call protection. And so in reality, what would happen, these numbers probably simplify things. But in reality, what would happen is that surplus fund would build up. And then when the bonds reach their first call date, which is probably going to be in about eight to ten years, the the county would begin at that time to use the surplus to pay off bonds early. And so that would actually probably accelerate the repayment a little bit. So even though it shows eighteen years, if they start, if you start calling the bonds early on their first call date, you eliminate the interest on those bonds early and that and that might help to pay off the bonds even sooner. So it's a a function of, the the call date is something, again, that investors demand when they are purchasing bonds because they want to know that they're not going to have those bonds immediately called away from them if you do have surplus money.
Thank you for the bonds one-on-one class.
Great explanation of this whole sheet and that there. Thank you for that question.
It makes sense to me that you do a second bond because you're not going to need all the money at first.
Yeah.
And so that that date is not set either. I mean, that could be backed off or brought up.
Right, yeah, depending on, yeah, depending on your construction cycle, it could, two years seem to be realistic, but it but it could be eighteen months. It could be three years, depending on how quickly your project goes. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to real quickly also go over with you here is the calendar of events for the issue. And Phil already touched on a couple of the sort of critical dates. The the schedule here basically outlines all of the activity that is going to occur leading up to the sale and then the closing of of the bond issue. And I've sort of highlighted some of the, you know, bigger events and the actions that the commission will take. On today, June fifteenth, you know, we're reviewing the financing plan. After that, and actually a draft has already been distributed, the the offering document or the preliminary official statement for the issue will be will be sent out and reviewed. We would, our plan is to return to you then on July thirteenth. And at that time, you'll adopt what we call a sale or a go-to-market resolution. And this is a resolution where you officially say, we want to go out and we want to sell bonds. Staff and and legal counsel and your advisors are authorized to distribute the official statement and set a sale date and a time. After that occurs, we'll do things like finalize the offering document, distribute it to potential purchasers, get the rating. We've got the rating, say, the rating call scheduled for the sixteenth of July. All of that will then lead up to the date that we actually receive the bids on the bonds. And we've scheduled that to be on August fifth. And that's the day that the banks and brokerage firms that I was mentioning will actually submit proposals to purchase the bonds from the county. Those bids will be evaluated and the best bidder will be assigned based on whoever offers to purchase the bonds at the lowest interest rate. And then we would return to you on your August tenth meeting. And on that day, you would officially adopt the bond resolution that that locks in the interest rates and officially authorizes the issuance of the bond. So that's probably the biggest date. Now, when we return to you in August, if things have gone as planned, we would expect that you would adopt that bond resolution. So to the extent that you've got questions, we would want to make sure that they were addressed well in advance of that, of the meeting on the tenth. After that, the the transcript for the bond issue is assembled by bond counsel. It's it's approved by the Attorney General in Kansas. And then if things, again, go as scheduled, at the end of August, on the twenty-sixth, the issue will close and and the funds will be delivered to the county. Somewhat similar, but a little bit different process than the bond issues that the county and the Public Building Commission did last year and earlier this year. Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you. Great presentation.
Yes, good. Thank you.
That was right on.
Item number two.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So while we're talking about the jail project, on July thirteenth, staff and outside assistants plan to be before you not only for the the bond sale resolution, but also to have you approve design development. So the design development process is wrapping up by the end of this month. We had a meeting with the architects yesterday, pretty lengthy meeting. We'll be meeting with them again tomorrow. The sheriff and I are also going to have a separate meeting to go over a list of things that they've given us on what furniture they plan to design into the building and what furniture we will be purchasing out outside of the actual construction project. So we need to wrap that all up. And if you have not been down Pacific Avenue lately, there is a sign up. So go go check that out. Future jail coming soon. So I will be on KINA this Saturday with the sheriff to talk more about the project and be happy to answer any questions about that. Also, just to to mention a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act. And we did receive a draft form from our consultants for agreements with potential awardees. So we're working through that with Mr. Montoya and will be back in front of the commission to formally adopt that for for the money that you awarded to the airport authority. I will be meeting with the city later this afternoon to talk about cooperation between the two entities on our distribution of American Rescue Plan funds. And we also did receive a letter from K-State Polytechnic and Kansas Wesleyan regarding a request as well. So much more to come on ARPA. And that's all I had for you this morning.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any Commissioners' comments?
I just want to comment on being in liberal last week, attending the Kansas Association of Counties Conference. And quite honestly, it was probably one of the best conferences I've ever attended in my life. Almost every, every speaker, everything that they talked about was dealing with the issues that's going on in the county, the ARPA monies, the funds, the SP thirteen. A lot of, lot of great information. It was, it was good. And and I just want to bring to the table also is that sitting around in discussions and listening to our administrator have conversations with other commissioners, other administrators, the wealth of information that he carries with him at all times and just is available to help other people was just amazing. It was, I just want to commend you and thank you for your your talks that you had with everybody.
You're going to make me blush, Commissioner.
Okay, well, anyway, but anyway, it was, it was very, very interesting. And the other comment I wanted to also discuss, because I've had quite a few emails and phone calls in regards to a forty more hour, forty mile per hour speed limit out on Simpson Road between Crawford and Magnolia. And I, and talking with the engineer at the road and bridge department yesterday. And I kind of expected getting phone calls in liberal last week of what it was about. And it is, and due to the conjunction with the right-of-way purchases and the surveying that's going to need to be going on out there in regards to expanding the road width and getting rid of the sharp deep ditches there that they will be starting that process. And it won't be finished for a couple of years, but they wanted to get it. And when that does get all resolved and we have nice slope ditches there on that two-mile stretch, that it will go back to the full deal. But so if the public would just please put up with this here for a couple of years, it'll it'll go back. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to the table also. So any other comments? Hearing that, I'll just call this business meeting to adjourn. Thank you.